Okay, let's start. Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Gasmus Bambuka? Is that it? The pastor here? Apparently Jocelyn wants to do the prayer today.
She must be the pastor.
Are you applying?
I didn't know she was an ordained pastor too.
Are we seeing a career change? Okay. We need a volunteer to do the prayer because we're not allowed. Are you allowed to this week?
Yeah.
Okay. He restarts, he's got three in a year.
After this, he's got one last.
What, he's allowed to do three in a year?
I thought it was four.
How could the government possibly dictate how often you pray?
It's Kingdom of God stuff, right? I think that should like, I don't know, whatever. Bow your heads, please. Dear Lord Jesus, most gracious and merciful, we thank you for bringing us all here tonight, Lord, for filling our lungs with breath today, forgiving us food for our bellies today, and for giving us another day to experience your greatness and glory. Lord God, I pray that you would put a spirit of repentance and faith in all of our hearts. We acknowledge that we show up here broken today, that we show up here needing your grace every day and every minute of every day. And Lord, I pray that in your grace, you would grant a spirit of cooperation and sincerity to this room, that where there is agreement, you may be lifted high, and where there is disagreement, Lord, you may also be lifted high, even in the righteous conduct of the people who are here today. Lord, we ask for wisdom for our leaders, and we pray, Lord, that you would help them to be equipped and ready to serve in the capacity in which you have placed them. Lord God, we acknowledge you here tonight, and we also ask that you would be merciful to allow us to return home safely at the end of this night and that you would be glorified in our hearts as we lay our heads down to rest this evening, Lord. In your most precious name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Please stand, place your hand over your heart, and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So Vice Mayor, will you take care of?
That's a pile. Highway Patrol.
Sure. I'll do that. Mr. Eymard.
Yes, sir.
Will you join us at the podium? Is this the Highway Patrol? Do we have anything on the Highway Patrol?
No.
No? No?
They have a stack.
Come on back here. I'm gonna let Mr. Eymard.
You will?
I do.
You're putting a lower then.
Come on back.
Mayor Paris, City Council, all the city employees, tonight, I'm saying hi to those guys too. Tonight, we're here about 10 years ago, we had the honor to go to Sacramento and get the first riding academy, which has changed to connected with the Highway Patrol. In that time, we've trained almost 1,800 riders in a safe riding course. And tonight, we're gonna honor our retiring instructors and the cooperation of the Highway Patrol. So we thank them very much. The city's been cooperative. We've been with the fairgrounds now for 10 years, our riding class, and it's any age, 18 and up, right? Thank you. This is Denise and Tim Everett.
When the Antelope Valley Harley-Davidson began its riding program in March of 2008, we reached out to the Antelope Valley CHP station to attend our California Motorcyclist Safety Program, rider education classes, to speak about motorcycle safety, answer our students' questions, and build a strong community relationship. To the station, we thank you for responding to this community's need for building a positive relationship with the CHP and allowing the officers to share their experiences with our students. So tonight, we're recognizing Officers Chris Bourne, Dave Morales, and Brian Orcut, our motor officers at the Lancaster Station. We thank them for regularly giving their time to attend our motorcyclist training classes over the past 10 years. Your presence and interaction with the students has added intrinsic value to motorcycle rider safety by making novice riders more aware of the physical and mental skills needed for safe riding and for offering our seasoned riders an opportunity to connect with the CHP. So thank you to Chris Bourne. He's here representing Brian Orcut and Dave Morales. The other two are, one is at the President's?
President's Detail.
President's Detail. And Officer Orcut is with the K-9 group now, and he's in Los Angeles doing his thing. So Chris Bourne is accepting on behalf of the motor officers. Our Public Information Officer, Gil Hernandez, we thank you for allowing us to share the CHP booth during many community events, such as Thunder on the Lot, the AV Fair, Poppy Festival, the Jethawks Law Enforcement Day, and Los Angeles County Fire Station Open House, to make motorcyclists aware of their role in sharing the road with other motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists, and promoting motorcycle safety awareness through the CMSP Motorcyclist Training Course. So Officer Hernandez, thank you very much for your contributions to our program as well. So on behalf of the Antelope Valley Harley-Davidson Riding Academy, its over 2,000 Riding Academy students, the instructors, we express our heartfelt gratitude to the Antelope Valley California Highway Patrol Station for their support of our rider education program. Thank you for allowing us to make this presentation and recognizing our officers.
Well, let's make a stack in the mall. Okay. Get some pictures taken. Which ones?
And these are for Brian.
And then we'll just, just one. And we'll take some pictures. Very cool.
You better edit it than we.
Seven across facing right here. Yes, set it yourself, correct.
Honor will be in metal here.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your honesty.
It is stupid. Okay, back to us. Wanna come with me?
It's a chuck.
God, it's hot down there.
Is it?
Okay, you can help me with this?
Yes, I am. Who else is gonna help?
I'm gonna help you.
You all here? More of a, in your face. Okay. So how is it you both won? I mean, that's unusual, isn't it? For both the men and women? Good evening. I would like to take a moment to recognize the University of Antelope Valley's history-making men and women's basketball teams for each earning the title of California Pacific Calpak Conference Champions. Both teams defeated the University of California Merced Bobcats to garner their first-ever Calpak championship. The dedication of these student athletes stretches far beyond the court, each of them taking their studies very seriously, with majors ranging from criminal justice, business management, to health and fitness and others. On behalf of the entire Lancaster City Council, I would like to congratulate all of you on your championship wins, and thank you for being positive role models for the teens and children of the Antelope Valley. Your commitment to your team as well as to your education serves as proof that our valley's future leaders are indeed well-rounded and committed to the success of themselves and others. Thank you. Yeah. Let's see. What? Wait a minute, Scott Wilk wants us to give his award? Really? All right. It's Scott. Okay. But let's say this. They're all kinda together?
What is that?
Oh, I see. Okay. So we just call out the names?
Yeah.
Okay. Leah Beatty. Now Leah, I want you to notice that the Lancaster award is so much prettier than this.
Thank you, thank you.
Leana Blank.
Leana? Leana Blanc?
Blanc? Yeah, Blanc. Sorry.
Thank you.
Samantha Earl. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Here, let's do the. Sierra Blankenbeckler. Hi, Sierra. Oh, are you turning around? Well, they're not supposed to be. Alyssa Gonzalez.
Oh, here comes Sherwin.
You had a tough job. Patino Jones. Patiana. Patiana. I'm sorry. It's a beautiful name, and I just butchered it. Here, shake hands. Ahana Oaks? Hey, she gave me the name. Did I get it wrong?
I was, that was pretty close.
I was set up. Ajene. Ajene, thank you very much.
Sorry about that one.
Tiffany Perkins. Oh, you got that one.
Oh, she's got cheater shoes.
Tiffany, you sure you needed those heels?
Thank you. That's so cool.
You're married, Poppins ended or what? Right out there, and I'm milk. Allen Price.
This is the university.
Congratulations. University of Antelope Valley.
Antelope Valley. Both teams, basketball teams. And you have to be tall to be on the team.
Yes, except for the one guard.
I think it's Tara.
Tara? Tara?
Yeah, see, that's good for volleyball, too.
Don't be laughing at me. I didn't say.
Yeah. And the women, too. Like a double win. When do you hear, when do you hear a university get it on both sides?
Jocelyn Simon.
Latique? Wait, wait, wait. I got it right. Oh, I'm sorry. Latique Walton? Yeah? All right.
And when he does touch.
See, I would've got that one right.
3.5.
Ajene. Ajene Wilcox.
Hey, Raj. Congratulations. We looked good. Assistant Coach Jasmine Goldstein. I got it right. Congratulations. Good job. Coach Dion Price. Congratulations. Good work. You never yelled at them, did you? Okay. Can I also have some of my red shirts come up, John? Can we have the rest of the team come up?
Sure.
Rest of you guys coming up?
No, 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 we're gonna get, we got them for the.
No, the rest of my girls right there. Oh, the rest of the girls? Yeah. Why don't we have ones for them?
I don't know, that'd be a lot for a basketball.
This is one time I don't go in the back.
I mean, where would you, where would you start with all that height?
In the middle. Everybody's tall.
You got like four little ladies that are average height.
Let's get you up for it.
See, I knew she, I, she's six foot.
She's 6'1" with five foot heels. Congratulations.
Luck is therapy.
Now, this is the men's. What? This is the men's. Look, who's here? We could buy you a watch. That's a good idea. Let's have the coach come up and help us with the names. So who's the same coach? No. We need the men's coach up here.
This way, we don't have Angela butchering the names.
I can't. How we doing? Thank you.
So are you?
Wow.
It's great seeing you. I'm fantastic.
You want me, if I lose my voice? First year we ever won league in the conference town. Yeah. After three, under three years. I'm the little guy. All right, Sheldon Blackwell. This is Sheldon Blackwell. He was the MVP of our league this year. And he, and we just got word that he was voted honorable mention All-American. Ezekiel Armstrong.
Yes, sir. You wanna take a picture?
Hayden Hall. Jacob Mast.
DeVitas?
DeVitas. Don't let Rex do this. He said you gotta try this.
DeVitas. Mycitus?
Mycitus. Mycitus. That was good.
DeVitas was good.
That was good. That looked good. Miles Nolan Webb.
You recruited.
Yes, I did. That one worked real well. Marquise Reed. From Hollywood. It's Carlos Bussey. We call him CJ. You can't say his name. Nice shoes. Terrence Blum.
It's clear to me why you won.
It was clear to the coaching. It's clear to the coaching right now. Yeah, I know. Marquise Rivera. That one might have a chance. Yes. Stephen Bush. Devon Nolan.
Oh, it does? Oh, that goes with this. That goes with that. You know, I gave him two. My bad.
Brandon Wade.
He's not pissed. He's not pissed. Who else we got? Tevin's not, he's working.
Kamel Holden. Jamal Ennis. His brother plays in NBA. His brother plays in NBA.
Really?
Our French connection, Lenny McGuire. And to my associate head coach, Jordan Mass.
And. And last and definitely not least, Coach Darwin Cook, also Coach of the Year. We would also like to say that the women's coach was also MVP as well. Coach of the Year.
I it does. He was MVP of the league. Somebody else got it.
Thank you all, especially Mr. Mayor and the council. On behalf of the institution, the co-founders Marco and Sandra Johnson, faculty, staff, students, student athletes, we are beyond appreciative of the support of the city and just wanted to present a few signed balls from the institution for all of the support that you guys provide us. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and all of the city staff for all you guys do for our institution. Thank you.
Wait a minute. You take one. Are we getting in touch? Two rows, Paulus and back. Paulus and back. But you better stay, you better stay with the gentleman over here. Probably need one more of you over on the side because this podium gets in. So give me the two girls. No, this is a good thing. Oh, it's a good thing? That's a good thing. No, no, you can stay up there. Thousand each of the two girls. Okay? Hey, this is a good thing. You should be smiling about this. Both of you, this is really good. What do you think, I made her money? You said it. All right, you guys announce what they've done, and I'll come in.
Okay, both of these young ladies up here were first-team All-Calpak Conference players. Okay, both of these young ladies up here were first-team All-Cowpack Conference players. So, the mayor's gonna recognize them on a special level.
Okay, so, we got the MVP and we've got First Team All-League. And both of you were first-team, right? So, we have $1,000 for each of you. All right. See that guy there? Okay, now, I know how much you want to stay here the whole meeting. And I know how much you want to hear me talk for the next two hours, but I'll give you one chance to escape. We're gonna take a five-minute break. We're back in session. City manager, anything to be removed?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Consent calendar. Anything to pull? Any speaker cards?
On the consent calendar, the...
Item six, I believe.
I think that's the...
Okay, well, I've gotta recuse myself on CC1, CC3, and CC7 because we own property within the proximity of the projects.
We need the SACC1.
You're right.
Correct? Is that the same consent calendar?
Um, yes. SACC1, CC3, and CC7 for the mayor. Or, yeah. But, but Marx, help me understand. How about CC6?
How about if me and Ken will leave for CC6? You two. You vote on that, and then you leave. We'll vote on the other stuff.
Right.
Okay, let's do that.
And again, so the record should reflect at least on me personally in regards to CC6. I live in the vicinity of Lancaster Boulevard and would be approximately 13th Street West.
And I live on Lancaster Boulevard, uh, next to the future roundabout that I would've voted against.
Vice Mayor Chris, before you leave, do we have a speaker card on CC6 before we vote on that? I know there's a speaker card on one of the CC items.
There's one on CC5.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, so we're clear to vote on CC6 at this time, Mr. Mayor?
You know, he gave me this impassioned reason why we shouldn't do the roundabout. And he didn't mention the part about living there. Okay, uh, any, there's no speaker cards, right? Let's waive the report. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to recommend CC6 as a prize for project number 17-010.
And I second that.
Let's vote. And it passes unanimously with the two council members absent. Okay, you guys, you can come back. All right, I'm gonna leave on CC1, CC3, and CC7.
Wait a minute, let's do, you wanna do the rest of the consent?
Oh, Mr. Reeves, I wouldn't want to miss that. CC5, what is that?
Michael, CC5?
Mr. Reeves, Mr. Reeves, Mr. Reeves. Mayor Paris, council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm speaking tonight on CC5. It has to do with franchise fees, but I'm gonna use this opportunity to ask the city if they can do anything to get back Channel 3 that's maintained by that broadcasting system. Because Channel 3 was a great news channel, and a lot of people in town watched it. And now we're kind of without our own TV channel. Is there anything that the city council can do or ask Charter Communications or whoever's running it, if we can get our TV station back? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there, uh...
I'll move to accept CC5.
Second that.
Good job, guys.
It's unanimous. All right, uh, so what do we have left?
Okay, I'll be back. Okay, we don't have any speaker cards.
So, we're just taking the items that he's recusing himself?
No, we're taking the rest of them.
So, the motion that the vice chair, Vice Mayor is asking for is a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar as presented on the agenda.
Okay, so moved then. I'll make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion, second. Let's vote. And it's four yes votes with Mayor Paris recusing himself.
Okay, we're all done with the consent calendar?
Yes.
Good job, Mr. Chris. NB1. Authorization to use biological impact funds for the acquisition of land to expand Antelope Valley, California Poppy Reserve. Let's have the staff report, and then we'll have the public comment. Ms. Garabey will be giving the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council and Commissioners. Council directed staff to determine a strategy for financing the acquisition of conservation land to expand the California Poppy Reserve, which, as you know, is in close proximity to many of the city's most recent solar developments. Since 2005, when the city council adopted ordinance 848, a biological impact fee of $770 per acre has been collected from developers. And that's been collected to deal with the cumulative impacts and incremental loss of habitat caused by development in the city. Fees collected from solar developers, including S-Power, who's actually paid over $2.8 million in that biological impact fee, has been used by the city to acquire conservation property. Since 2005, we've acquired over 600 acres of conservation land throughout the Antelope Valley. Staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution 18-09, authorizing the appropriation and use of up to $1.3 million to acquire additional conservation property, which will expand the California Poppy Reserve. If approved by council, staff will work with staff from state parks and will purchase land identified through the California State Park Poppy Reserve Expansion Strategy. The city of Lancaster will donate purchased land and will have no ongoing maintenance cost or maintenance responsibility for that land. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this partnership, and I've also invited Russ Stingman, who is the district superintendent for state parks, to answer any questions. He is, yes.
I have a question first, Patty.
Sure.
I think we asked you to partner with the county and with the state to see if they will match the funds. Are we going to do that with this money?
That is something that we're still looking at. This is just an opportunity to appropriate some funds, but we're still looking at all of our funding opportunities and how we partner with different agencies.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Russ Stingman, Tatchee District Superintendent, California Department of Parks and Recreation, 15101 Lancaster Road, Lancaster, California. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. As the office responsible for the stewardship of the Antelope Valley, California Natural Poppy Reserve, we have an interest and concern about land use adjacent to the reserve. The long-term health of the Antelope, California Poppy Natural Reserve is dependent on the health of the regional ecosystem because the biotic boundaries of the park extend beyond its jurisdictional boundaries. California State Parks is a state agency. Our mission is to provide for the health, inspiration, education of the people of California by helping preserve the state's extraordinary biodiversity, protecting its most valuable natural and cultural resources, and creating opportunities for high-quality outdoor recreation. The Antelope, California Poppy Natural Reserve was established to protect, showcase the outstanding display of native flowers, and particularly the California poppy, the state flower, which was designated the state flower in 1903. In 1978, the State Park Recreation Commission approved the department's resource management plan and general plan development for the Antelope, California Poppy Natural Reserve. This plan provides appropriate management of the resources and development of facilities for public consistent with the purpose which the reserve was established, the preservation, protection of unique resources within the reserve uncovered by human influences. As part of this plan, we're required to identify lands outside the boundaries of the reserve that are prime concern to present, future, environmental values to visitor use within the reserve. These lands comprise of surrounding lands within the reserve, including lands of the Antelope Valley buttes, the fair amount buttes that could be affected by the management, protection, view shed, or the visitor experience of the resources that are found within the reserve. These lands within these areas, which have been determined by California State Parks to be an area of management of concern, does not necessarily need to be acquired by the state or included within the state park system. We believe by developing partnership with local agencies, nonprofit groups, we can increase and protect the open space areas within the Antelope Valley. We would be honored and pleased to work with the city of Lancaster and other land conservation group, such as the Transit Habitat Conservation Authority, THC, to strategy, plan, acquire properties that will increase, preserve, and preserve open space areas to ensure that individuals, the communities of the Antelope Valley, the residents of the state of California can visit open space areas to enjoy and see the California poppy and other wildflowers within the Antelope Valley. Thank you. Any questions?
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Usually, we don't have that kind of support. Thank you. It usually goes the other way. Shannon, you want to be first or last? Okay. Michael Reeves.
Mayor Paris, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Now, part of this is the result of the planning commission allowing the solar panels to be placed out there near the preserve. So, here's who we are, have them encroaching on the preserve. You remember, a couple years ago, they wanted to build some houses out that way, and the council said, "No, we're not gonna let you build the houses. We're gonna enlarge the preserve." Remember that? Well, here we are, we're gonna buy the land, and we're gonna give it to the state. No, we don't give, give it to the state. We asked the state if they will buy it and manage it. I can't see us giving it to the state of California with no strings attached to it. Thank you.
I'm not even gonna try. Michael, that was disappointing. Roger Schaefer.
I hope he doesn't sound disappointed, Michael. I've argued with Marv before on this topic. I'm not quitting until he knocks me out. See, this is Marv's deal with poppy. We talked about it, you weren't even here.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Busy.
Lollygagging, whatever. Yet this time, I'm playing it safe.
Forking, I got a living to make.
I know. Yeah, you and my son. I know what you and my son do. Yet this time, I'm playing it safe. I'm not choosing, I'm choosing to be neither, I'm choosing to be neutral, neither for or against. So, how can I lose? Let me start with why I may be in favor of this deal. First, the poppies bring the outside public to Lancaster, and people spend money. Second, we get 1.3 million in state grant money for only $25,000. I'm telling you all this because the only one that answered my emails is Mark. Chris, Vice Mayor, tried to, but I didn't call him back because Mark answered all the questions. And now, I'm not sure after hearing this gentleman's, if we got this tied up for sure with the state. I don't trust Jerry Brown farther than I can spit, you know?
Okay, now we're, now we got something in common.
Yeah. Anyway, third, if we don't tear up our desert soil, then people like me won't get valley fever. You guys seen me with these tanks before. Got the valley fever in this valley. Or, I met, got it from Bakersfield, that's where I came from. Okay, now let's argue against the deal. First, no government should have the right to take a person's land if his land does not do any harm to anyone else. This is just my plain libertarian belief. If I do no harm to you or anybody else, and I obey the laws of the land, I should have liberty and freedom. Not all these, well, see, they took my folks' land, Vasquez Rocks, to get you freeway up here. And they says, "We're gonna give you fair market value, $80,000," Mr. Schaefer. And they took off a bunch of chunk of Vasquez rocks. They homesteaded for the 1800s. Anyway, so I'm, I'm kind of biased against that deal. Second, our ordinance protect us from contractors making dust, so don't play the dust card with me. I used to be a contractor. They finance. Third, if, if this is state money, if it is our state, we, we're part of this state. So, the state maybe can use it for the homeless or ensure that we have plenty of clean drinking water instead of putting a wall up at the poppy's reserve. I don't think that, I don't think this is gonna, I don't think we got enough money to buy a perimeter around the poppy reserves. Okay, that's it. I, I threw some extra stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
I had it down a minute and a half.
Margaret Ryan.
Thank you for letting me talk to you tonight. I'm Margaret Ryan. I have the honor to serve as a president of the Poppy Reserve Mojave Desert Interpretive Association. We, we are the organization that supports the poppy reserve and other parks in Mojave Desert, including Saddleback Buttes State Park on the east side of the valley and Arthurby Ripley Desert Woodland. We are a nonprofit community organization formed over 30, 30 years ago by local citizens interested in preserving wildflower fields in the Antelope Valley portion of the Mojave Desert. Primdi is now a California State Park cooperating association with the support for five parks in Mojave Desert, including the Antelope Valley, California Poppy Reserve, and Ripley Desert Woodland. We are grateful for efforts on the part of the city of Lancaster to protect lands adjacent to these local state parks. These efforts already have preserved John These efforts already have preserved Joshua Tree, California Juniper Habitat bordering Ripley Desert Woodland State Park. We now welcome the attention of the city concerning lands bordering the Antelope Valley Poppy Reserve. This park was created in 1976 due to the tireless efforts of dedicated Antelope Valley citizens, including Mel Stark, Jane Penaro, and Dorothy Bolt. Although these local visionaries are no longer with us, the poppy reserve remains a revered natural park, beloved by area residents and supported by the many who volunteer their time during poppy season. Legacy of these local citizens is now threatened as development extends ever closer to the poppy reserve. We are encouraged that you recognize this threat. We urge the city to work with the Tatchby District of California State Parks to provide protection for remaining poppy lands. We also urge the city's continued cooperation with Transition Habitat Conservancy and other land conservation groups in the effort to protect poppy lands. We also strongly urge a moratorium on any further industrialization of lands within the view shed of the poppy reserve and Arthurby-Ripley Desert Woodland. Wildflower lands that are crucial for the future of the poppy reserve and nearby Ripley Desert Woodland have been identified by the Transition Habitat Conservancy and described in its Conceptual Area Preservation Plan, or CAP. The CAP identifies lands providing vital connectivity between the Angeles National Forest and the poppy reserve. During the wildflower season of 2017, more than 162,000 visitors enjoyed the unique colorful vistas available to them at the poppy reserve, a park that exists due to the dedication of citizens of the Antelope Valley. Little time remains to protect these iconic wildflower lands and the views they create. Our organization strongly supports all effort to protect remaining natural habitat adjacent to the poppy reserve and Arthurby-Ripley Desert Woodland. Thank you for recognizing the importance of protecting the natural treasures of our beautiful valley. And as I came here today, I was reminded that I should also thank you for everything you're, you're doing for promoting rooftop solar and distributed generation so that we are producing energy in a way that it's closer to where it's being used. Thank you very much. Oh, I also have a copy of my presentation for all of you and a brochure, and there's lots of nice photos in here, so.
Thank you. If you'll give it to the clerk, then she'll get it to us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, James Young, Mayor, Council. I'm just a local citizen, but I am a property owner out in this area, and I'm concerned about the process. Are you buying land, planning on buying land from individual private owners? That's one question. Also, is there any collusion, sorry for the word, but between the donated city land and money that will come out of the fund? Is there going to be any transfer of, of funds in, in those exchanges?
I don't understand your question.
My point is, if you plan on donating the money, is there going to be a side deal where some of the fund money goes to the donated land? I've lived here a long time.
We're not donating any money. We're purchasing land to acquire land.
Right, but it said also the city will donate its own land. That's what it sounded like.
Donate that land back to the state.
Okay. Okay, and then also, will the monies on the properties, will that become part of the public record at some point when the money is spent?
It'll all be done publicly.
That'll be a public record. And do any of you personally own property out in that area and stand to gain from this at all?
Just can.
Well, just a question.
If, if we do, then we won't be allowed to vote on it, but I'm not aware of anybody on this council that owns property out there.
So what is the process for, that you're going to go about to buy land from private owners? Like, because it sounds like to me, you have the best intentions, you're going to secure this land, expand the reserve, and keep the, the solar development, et cetera, away from the land.
The, the whole purpose, when I brought this forward, was to, not only to send a message that we're on everyone's side as far as the encroachment on the poppy preserve of the solar, but our Planning Commission does what they're supposed to do under the regulations that they're, it's private property. So, everyone that has spoke and has spoke towards it's private property, and we should recognize the value of that, we do as a city. So, we collect money to mitigate that problem, so we can buy and purchase land, and that land will be next to the poppy preserve, and then we can donate that land to the state.
Okay. And one more little comment, which is related to CC3. So, Mr. Mann, I remember you as being a traffic safety individual, and so it's about the repaving of the auto mall, which last time I went there, didn't look so bad, so I would invite you to drive around, maybe even on a bicycle, the Mona Vista neighborhood around the school itself. It's an embarrassment. It's atrocious, and that whole neighborhood should be repaved, but think about kids on bikes going, it's dangerous. And really, you should consider maybe setting some funds aside for when school's out and really treating that area around the school. It's very dangerous.
Thank you.
Kind of embarrassing, actually. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Shannon McDonald. Now, we need to bring this meeting up a little bit. We need people happy. We need people effervescent.
Why do you think I wanted to go last? Am I last? I hope I'm last.
You're last. You asked for it, you got it.
Well, good evening, everyone. Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, all you guys. I actually came to compliment, because I, I absolutely detest those solar panels out there. I live in the area where I live, driving down 50th, you can literally see, just, just see of solar panels, and I've always been concerned about that because a few years back, I remember bringing up the issue of the, you know, the fake turf on, you know, and rocks, and people having that stuff, and it creates a lot of heat, and I can't imagine how those solar panels don't create that, that type, that immense heat. And I've driven out there before, on my way to Bakersfield before, and it's just, it's just, it's an eyesore to me. I, I've been out here like 40 years, and it's really depressing to see that in compare. I'd much rather see flowers and see it protected. I want my poppies protected. I really do. I think that it's so important, it's a, first of all, it's a state flower. I do believe that's our state flower. And it's just really important that we do everything we can in our power to protect it, no matter what it takes. And I've read, I've been sitting here reading others' opinions, and they have very valid points. I read the paper, and I just think it's a good idea. I think that what you guys are doing is excellent, and I just wanted to thank you for that, for all your work and hard, hard work, okay? You guys have a nice day. Hi, Lee.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay. Fair motion? I'll move we adopt Resolution Number 18-09 and appropriate 1.3 million of biological impact fees.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. And it passes unanimously. You know, Shannon, I don't like what those solar panels look like either, but I'd rather have black solar panels on the ground than black air, and that really is the choice we have. All right? NB2?
Any speaker cards?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Before you, for consideration tonight, is Ordinance 1039 that would add Chapter 9.50 to the Lancaster Municipal Code, also known as Gabriel's Law. This law is brought before you to address the council's deep concern for the children of Lancaster, and to require any person whose employment involves assuming the custody of children or conducting interviews of children of their parents in order to investigate allegations of parental abuse or neglect must use a video and audio recorder to make a video and audio recording of their interactions with the children and/or their parents in carrying out that role. It also requires the cataloging and preserving of the video and audio recordings and written policies to outline at a minimum the proper use of the audio and video equipment, the times when they should be activated, and conditions under which it is permissible not to have them activated. We, if the ordinance is adopted, the council should proactively notify entities and agencies potentially impacted as the requirements imposed by the ordinance likely exceed those entities and agencies' existing policies, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
I didn't realize we were going to be asking for video. Could we soften that, that if video is, doesn't interfere, meaning there are certain situations where you can't set up the camera? So it would have to be practical, whenever, so I guess how I want to word it is, whenever feasible to video.
Sure, so we could change.
All interviews have to be audio-recorded?
Yeah, we could change it to shall use audio recordings, and then add in parentheses, and to the extent practicable, video recordings in each instance where the phrase "audio and video recorder" is shown in the draft ordinance before you, or we can bring it back at a later date with those changes made. It's up to the council if you want to make that change from the DAS, or if you'd like to bring it back with that revision and have you consider it at that time.
Okay. Does the county have an interest?
Yes.
I know we had a meeting, and we talked about it, and was it with Angela, when she met with the supervisor on it? I know she spoke in depth with her about this issue.
Some of the next steps that we had discussed was meeting with the newly hired person that's in charge of DCFS, so that's the next thing. I've also spoken with Senator Scott Wilk and Assemblyman Tom Blackie to create legislation, and they're working on that currently as well, so they'll be sending that back to us so that we can review it here for the City of Lancaster and also for the county, for the supervisor.
Okay. You know, I, I hope the county understands, we've been working on this for eight years, and that's why we're moving forward. All right? And I understand also it's a new day, we got new people in DCSF, DCSF, and we have a new supervisor, but I don't want this to get lost any further, especially in light of the events that occurred in Palmdale. But I think the county should be aware that this isn't something they can thumb their nose at, because civil liability follows it. It's not like they can just expect it's not going to be enforced, because there will be a consequence civilly if they don't. And so it seems to me like the county should get on board with this and come up with something that is countywide, but is also efficacious and accomplishes what we hope to achieve, which is the protection of our children. Okay? Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Okay. And I would like to thank the councilwoman for her help in all of this and for beating the war drum. You got people to pay attention. Okay, thank you. And we're calling this Gabriel's Law, in honor of Gabriel, who was killed in Palmdale. Okay, you good?
I, I'm good. If it's the council's pleasure to introduce tonight, I would recommend that in Section 9.50.030A, where the phrase is, "Shall use a video and audio recorder," appears in the third line, that it be changed to "shall use an audio recorder," parentheses, "and video recorder to the extent practicable," and parentheses, "to make a video and/or audio recording of his or her interactions," and continuing as presented to the council, and that each and every other instance where it says "video and audio recorder," it be changed to "video and slash or audio recorder" to address the issue raised by the mayor. So that would be the motion I would recommend if adoption is what you, or introduction is what you'd like to present tonight.
So do we have to make a motion to that effect?
You would make a motion to the effect of what I just said.
Okay, I make a motion what she just said.
We can make a motion that says with the amendments.
Correct, yes.
Yes, speaker.
To introduce with the amendments as I read them.
Okay, well, let's get the speaker cards first, and then we'll do that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, everyone, good evening. This is a issue that's near and dear to my heart. F. Scott Fitzgerald said that the hallmark of a first-rate intellect is the ability to hold two opposed ideas in mind and still function. Now, I want to protect children. I think children need to be protected. I used to work with sexually exploited children that their own parents had sold them into prostitution before they were teenagers, so those children needed to be protected. I get that. But what I want to talk about is how do we qualify the nature of the complaint? For people that don't know, I had a neighbor report me anonymously for starving my children and chaining them in the yard, and because I wear sunglasses outside to protect my eyes, I had to go take a drug test to prove I wasn't on drugs. Where does this come from? So, if you talk about...
Wait a minute, did you let them out first?
You, you want to talk about litigation. I would have been much more agitated had someone come into my house with a camera and done all that. So, are we going to address the nature of the complaint? Who files the complaint? Because then you're getting in the middle of that false accusation. No one wants to do that. No one wants to even talk about the fact that you can be reported falsely, you have no recourse against these people that make wild accusations against you, and you have to go through that. So, that's what I want to do to protect the people of Lancaster, prevent this false accusation and no accountability for anybody. If you talk to these caseworkers, family members constantly make complaints anonymously against each other in divorce or other things like that. This is a huge problem. I hope my friend is back. I went to a ACLU meeting where Shannon McDonald spoke about her time in foster care and about being brought into the home and watching two lecherous men just look at her, and they both did bad things to her, and there's no recourse. So, how do we protect the children in foster care, let alone their parents? So, I would rather have a child taught badly to, by their parent than have them put into a place where they're going to get raped. And if someone tried to actually take my children, that would be a tremendous opposition from me. So, it's crazy, the system, I know a lot of great teachers that I love and do great work. The education system is a shambles. I know a lot of people from DCFS that do good work and want to help. The system is messed up. Who is going to fix it, and why don't we remove this anonymous reporting bit so that you can know who accused you of what? That's what I think we should do. Thank you.
Mayor Paris, Council, ladies and gentlemen. It was just a few years ago, three of you were up there, and you remember it, Gabriel's grandparents came to the meeting right after he was murdered, and here we are, three years later, and the murderers have not been sentenced yet. I appreciate your concern, Angela, and, you know, this shows your concern, but I cannot wrap my head around to see how those people did what they did to a child. I just can't understand it. We are showing our concern, but is this the best we can do as a city? Is there anything we can do to make certain that the children that are looked over and watched over by the social workers in Lancaster do their job? Is there any way we can monitor that? Is this going to help us monitor them doing their job? Allegedly, the county has hired dozens of new social workers, that's what they say, to handle this and reduce the caseload. I applaud you for your concern for that child, and I applaud the council, but I, I just wish that we could do something more. Thank you.
Thank you. Fran Sarah Saris.
Thank you. You're welcome. Let me know when. When? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris. Is that, can you hear me now? No? Okay. Way down.
I think you're good.
Okay, thank you. Council members, staff, ladies and gentlemen, my name is, like, Mayor... Council members, staff, ladies and gentlemen, my name is like the mayor said, Fran Saraseras. I'm an advocate for seniors and for people that can't or won't speak for themselves. And I'm also your commissioner on the Homeless Impact Committee. On this NB2, I had a question on the videos, first of all, is when is going to be practical? And when is it, and how are they going to go about policing this situation? I'm for doing something more penetrable in the household where abusing of children is being done. I also, in the practicality of the caregivers that also abuse our children, they should be, they need to be interviewed more closely, because I've gone to these foster places where these parents or these people go to get foster children, and they don't even, they don't even take care of the children that they have there with them. And yet they're going to let them foster children? I think they need to give more strict laws and regulations to qualify a social worker. A paper that says he's got a degree in sociology or whatever it takes to do what they do is not enough, I think. A deeper program to get into their backgrounds and really ask, and don't just give them the okay to be a caregiver without really looking into their backgrounds. I kind of agree with the video situation, because at least that gives the parents that think they might be doing something wrong. And if they are doing something wrong, they'll be a little bit more cautious. And I also wanted to know when and where is it practical to put these videos? And also, we don't want to infringe on people's privacy. So there's a lot to be done here, and I thank you for your help.
Thank you. Okay. Good motion.
I think Angela should do the motion.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we introduce ordinance number 1039.
Second that.
I think that we need to introduce ordinance 1039 with the amendments.
With the amendments.
And I second that.
Thank you.
Don't you hate it when you correct shit like that?
I'm sorry.
Let's vote.
The attorney was coming over to yell at us.
I would not yell.
Okay, NB3, do we have any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Jeff, I know that you have a burning desire to come and give this presentation you've worked on for days, but we're going to pass. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the appropriation of the 225,000, 225, 225,000 and SSARP grant funds from the account 3494785-301. Increase estimated reserves in the account 349-3308-100 by the same amount and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute professional services for and peers of Los Angeles in the amount of 249,132.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous. All right, NB4, we have one speaker card.
Hmm, that's interesting.
I wonder if it's because he's running for your seat?
My seat.
Mr. Hogan, I'm sorry, but Michael's running for council. You're going to have to do your presentation.
Actually, this is a great opportunity. I was going to introduce Trolis Niebla, who's our city traffic engineer. So he oversees building and safety, all transportation issues, signals, signs, markings. So I'm going to have him do a quick soundbite on this item.
He is also currently the secretary to the NCTC.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
So is he the guy that's responsible for the streetlight on Avenue Allen, 25th Street, taking three, four months to change?
No, that's Michael.
So, Trolis, I'll let you.
I want you to know that I was dehydrated waiting for that light to change. It was a medical emergency.
We apologize. We're working on that now. We're doing improvements to our interconnect system that hopefully, once that's done, the lights will be more coordinated and it'll improve the flow of traffic through the city.
Thank you. See, if it was Marvin, he'd just run it, because, you know, the vice mayor and all. But some of us are more law-abiding.
Marvin appropriated the money from the AVA QMD to do it. That doesn't mean he gets to run the red light, does it?
Marvin, during his two-and-a-half-minute wait, would be on the phone with Jason Rice, screaming at us too while he was waiting.
Well, my presentation on this item will probably be shorter than you waited at that light.
That's true.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I was more excited to present on the previous new business item than this item, but this is on the Joint Powers Authority for the North County Transportation Coalition. Since 1995, Lancaster has been participating in the North County Transportation Coalition. This has been a consensus-building group made up of Palmdale, Lancaster, Santa Clarita, and the county, and they focus their attention on transportation and related issues. So with the passage of the Measure M, there's now new money, and actually unprecedented amount of money, that is potentially available to the region. So the NCTC board felt now is the time to more formalize the structure of the organization by making it a joint powers authority. And they felt that that would position us to ensure that our region gets our fair share of that money. With that, we recommend council approve the joint powers authority.
They're also taking it from a consensus board to a majority vote.
Correct. Simple majority vote, and we changed the board structure slightly, too.
Right.
Yeah. How long have you been up here?
In this area?
Yeah.
Antelope Valley? Worked for the city for about a year and a half, but I've been up here since 1979.
Certainly long enough to recognize that we never get our fair share.
Correct. That's why this is important.
Yes.
So is there any ordinances that the only people on this joint powers board not have any felony charges pending against them?
I don't know if that's in our, in the JPA.
I just thought I would ask.
Mayor, maybe Marvin might want to explain the details given both of us sit on that. Or, I mean, obviously, I think it's a smart move for the city to...
I think the supervisor stepped in, and it's been, the best way to describe it is a quagmire of, we cannot get anything accomplished because we cannot come to an agreement for the four jurisdictions. The four jurisdictions are the County of Los Angeles, City of Santa Clarita, City of Palmdale, and City of Lancaster. When certain monies become available, everybody fights over that money. We cannot distribute it equally, because people think that their jurisdictions are entitled to a little bit more than they actually are. The last time that we came to an agreement was when their mayor, Pro Tem of Palmdale, and me and Ken went, and we agreed on a division of over 200 million to both cities to improve our intersections. And we'll be increasing that here shortly to fix the intersections, correct?
Correct.
So it's, by making it a majority vote rather than a consensus vote, we will actually start accomplishing things on this board. But it's a very good board to do, and with a JPA, it looks good. And we have the supervisor to thank for moving the ball forward.
Yeah.
Works for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Reeves, does it work for you?
This is the last time, so. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council staff, I have a question for the Vice Mayor. He's the chairman of the AVTA board. Is this going to result in hiring a staff and a director to run this organization now?
Absolutely. A member, and that's what we actually need, is to have a member that represents us in the different COGS that go down throughout LA. But Measure M allows us to have money for that. The supervisor is going to fund it for the first year while we're developing that money. And then while we get the money from the Measure M to do it, hire the person and do everything, then we'll be able to, the JPA will be able to fund it from itself at that time. But the money is already allocated through Measure M.
Okay. Does the Board of Supervisor allocate the money? Do they distribute it?
The supervisor barger allocated money from her general fund.
Yeah, out of her, out of her actual account. So she's going to fund it for the first year to staff it.
So they give, they give the money to the supervisor who distributes it? Is that correct?
No, the JPA will actually have, the employee will, they will be employed, the joint powers agreement, and then the supervisor will take on that cost.
Okay. Who's going to pay for the staff that we're going to have? The executive director?
I just told you, Michael, the supervisor is taking on that cost for the first year. After the first year, Measure M will pay for the staff.
And how much is it going to cost?
We don't know yet. It's allocated under, I think it's a 4% or 5% of our allocation. We can use it towards staff for this.
Yeah, are we really better off creating a bureaucracy?
This is not a discussion. This is the time for you to make your presentation. And if you want to talk to the Vice Mayor, if he has office hours, he'd be happy to meet with you. Okay?
Okay. Well, my feeling is that we don't need another bureaucracy in the County of Los Angeles. That's my personal opinion. You know, Senator Scott Wilk attempted to create something like this for the Measure B trauma funding. And when I found out about it, I contacted every legislator.
Stay on point, Michael. Stay on point. This is about transportation.
At any rate, I think we're better off with this current situation rather than creating a bureaucracy that part of the funding is going to be used to fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the joint powers.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Let's vote. And it passes unanimous. Thank you. Well, we're now at council reports.
NB5.
Oh, NB5.
Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Oh, I guess I did. And that was yours. How could I forget you?
We have no speaker cards.
No speaker cards, but nonetheless.
Would you like to hear from me?
Do it fast.
I will do it fast. Mayor Paris and council members, good evening again. Before you tonight for consideration is ordinance 1040, amending Section 8.08.010 of the municipal code, and introduction of ordinance 1041, amending Section 12.16.010 of the municipal code. These are both cleanup items to address prior instances where our municipal code adopted by reference the codes of Los Angeles County, in particular, the public health ordinance of the County of Los Angeles, and most importantly, as amended and in effect as of February 21, 1978. And as to Los Angeles County Highway Permit Ordinance Number 3597 was amended, was adopted as amended and in effect as of October 30, 1979. As you can imagine, those ordinances of Los Angeles County have changed over time. And in order to ensure that the most up-to-date versions of the county's ordinances are the ones we're abiding by, we're recommending to change the language of these two codes to as amended and, as amended from time to time, so that they are not the versions from 1978 and '79 respectively, and instead as the current versions.
Thank you. That was stunningly brilliant.
Why, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that we introduce ordinance 1040 and 1041.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous. Anything?
Yeah, I sat on the TDA Article 8 hearing board for the City of Lancaster and the City of Palmdale and for AVTA to see if there's any unmet transportation needs. We had several comments during it. It was a good hearing. I think we'll come out better for it. We did the Outlook Conference. The Outlook Conference was last Friday. The entire council spoke. It was good to see the entire council there, representing all the businesses. And we had a marketing meeting at the fairgrounds to see exactly what we're doing at the fair and maybe change our marketing up a little bit. So that's mine.
What do you mean, change your marketing up a little bit? What do you have in mind?
We're going to get rid of that big tower that...
That hurt, Marvin.
No, we're looking to go into maybe the San Fernando Valley. We're looking at exactly what our demographics are. We're looking at the price points for everybody. We're looking to see whether or not we can change the Wi-Fi. So we're going to go in and change a lot of the things so they'll have a more positive experience at the fairgrounds.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. So last week, we had a meeting here from LA County with the Women and Girls Initiative. I'm on the governing council, and we had a meeting of approximately 40 people. And what we're looking at is the inequities of women in the workplace for LA County and coming up with a plan so that we could actually, gosh, I guess, dilute some of the issues that they're currently having. It was a well-attended event, and we're going to be meeting again in about another three months from now.
What kind of issues are they having?
Looking at pay equality and looking at training, when you're thinking about human resources issues, not necessarily being looked at in the same way that if it was something similar to happen to a male. So what we're wanting to do is just make sure that we can try and even the playing field to a certain degree, and looking at all the different departments within the county itself.
Good. Are we looking at actually getting women into the workforce?
Absolutely. Because the data shows that when women do well in communities, communities thrive as well. So absolutely, looking at those things. Because right now, I've been looking at the fire department, sheriff's department, there's a minimal amount of women that are actually employed. And when you look at what it takes to become a fireman or sheriff, it seems to be somewhat unfair. So we're looking at those things to make sure that they're all on an even playing field when it comes to the physicality of all of it.
You could either carry the hose up the ladder or you can't, right?
That would be true. Yes.
I mean, I'm just wondering why we're not spending more energy and getting, we've got Northrop Grumman begging for women to come and come to work. They're great jobs, but we're not dealing with whatever the obstacles are for them to get there. And we seem to be focusing on a very minute section of the economy with very few jobs anyway. I mean, you know, it takes an act of God for somebody to get on the fire department, unless you know somebody. And what I'm, what I'm, what I'm more concerned about is, you know, it seems to me like there's some obstacles in the way of women being able to get those jobs at Northrop, which are careers, which, you know, you can live a good life, and they're, and they're going to be there for 30 years, these projects. I don't know. I'm wondering why we're spending so much time on carrying that damn hose up the ladder when there's only 10 people that can do it anyway. I mean, you have very few openings, right? Because, I mean, it's a great job. I get that. Because, I mean, it's a great job, I get that. But isn't, aren't we better, isn't it better to spend that time, energy, and money in actually getting families to work? And if it means providing childcare while they go through the eight-week training program, let's provide the childcare. I don't know. I just want to see a more efficacious effort of getting, of opening up the marketplace to women. And I think that we step on our foot by going after high-profile... Am I making sense?
You are. I think that one of the other things that we uncovered is women don't necessarily know about the availability of jobs in the communities that they live in. And so we need to work on a plan to bring that to, to light for a lot of women, specifically women that are ahead of household. So there are jobs that are out there that are actually careers, that are professional careers, and we need to do a better job of letting the communities that we serve, let them know about it.
I think we need to let them know about it, but also deal with whatever obstacles are in the way of them taking advantage of it. You know, the IBW, that's a career, and they're begging for women to get in. I don't know. We just had that meeting. And I'm talking to you, Representative Catherine Barker. Good. This is what we call a carom shot. You see, I look at her, but I know it's hitting you. Okay, good.
Mayor, I would also add, though, that I think that the good news here is that we're actually having the discussions and putting things into action, as opposed to sweeping things under the carpet and pretending that it does not exist. So we have to start somewhere, and here is where we are.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? You're good?
I'm good.
Good?
Want to hear about it?
You want to hear about it?
I do. I met with Sergeant Teresa, and as you know, we've been working with the community center. So we're waiting things to get going on that, and can't wait to start designing. Actually, we have a design meeting tomorrow with TOY about how we're going to design it to be multifaceted and multipurpose use for the former shelter that's becoming the community center. And so we met with Sergeant Teresa that introduced an excellent program for mentoring young males, especially with some of the problematic young males that we're having, according to statistics, in Antelope Valley, and be a mentorship, and officers will be involved. And so we're not just trying to get officers also, we're trying to get firemen and different ones that are in that type of role, probation officers. Had a good meeting with that and some other community leaders. And again, we're also trying to see how we can help with your job shortage situation, how we can get the information out to not just part of the community, but the total community, so that people can take advantage of these great careers that are being offered in Antelope Valley, and everybody can prosper together.
Well, at, at, at the very least, it's, it's a launching pad.
Right.
You know, and, and what I, I mean, I know what's going to happen. In six months to a year, we're going to see an influx of people from outside taking those jobs.
Right.
Because we failed to give a pathway for people to, to get into. And we just, I just don't want to see that happen. You know, we'll, we'll take outsiders after we take care of the people in Lancaster and the Antelope Valley. All right? So let's do whatever we got to do. All right? Good. Thanks. Housing Authority, no action. Financing Authority, no action. Power Authority, no action. I guess I've said enough, so the mayor doesn't have any announcements. And city clerk? Oh, city manager, I forgot about him. He's so sensitive, too.
Word on the street is this is people's favorite part of the meeting, too, so.
You should stay off the streets.
Like to give the council three updates on directives that they've given, and then we have a short video on the Board of Trade Conference. First, you may recall in the budget, you adopted a library study to fund a study of library services in Lancaster. TOY's group is leading that up. We've met with the consultant. Ms. Underwood Jacobs was at that meeting as well, too. Shortly, there'll be a survey out to people about what they'd like to see with library services. That's the first part. Then we'll have a town hall-style meeting, and we will present the results of that study to the council when it's done in a, in a couple of months. Angela, I don't know if you want to add anything to that or not?
You know, as we talked about the possibilities of what the library can become, because currently it's definitely being underutilized, and we want to make sure that the people that are utilizing it are, feel safe in that what we have to offer is current and innovative. So I'm very excited to work with Ms. Chisholm on this, this project, and I think it's going to be really something to talk about for the community of Lancaster.
Great. Very exciting.
Can we have hours for different age groups at the library?
We can certainly look at that. That's what this study is, is what the needs are.
Two o'clock, two o'clock to 10 o'clock. You have to be under 25.
I don't know the legal aspects of that, but we can, we'll look at that because we're paying the consultant. We can certainly look at, do other people do that? Is that necessary? What the benefits are, those kind of things.
Well, we all know what the problem is.
Agreed.
Let's start coming up with ways to deal with the problem.
One of the ideas, too, is to hold the town hall at the library, so everyone that comes has to walk through and see the experience they're having. Is that the experience they want to get into the library? Is that the gauntlet they want to pass? So, yeah, we hear you loud and clear.
With biometrics, couldn't we do a deal where felons aren't allowed in? I guess we can't do that, can we?
That's contested, right? I know, we'll, we'll look into that.
What a great world we live in, where you can't discriminate against probations on parole. I mean, felons on parole. Something wrong with that in the library, where our kids go.
The next thing I'd like you, for done with that subject...
Marvin, I want to assign you to fixing the pedophiles that hang around the library. Could you do that?
I would just close the library, open them up at the schools. That's where they belong.
When you have these meetings, explore that.
Okay. Absolutely.
But what about kids like me who get kicked out of school? I couldn't go to the library then, could I?
You're the type of person we want to eliminate from going to the library.
I'd like to argue with that.
Little below the belt. Second thing I'd like to update the council on, is that your last meeting topical, as Deputy Mayor Doris was talking about, you had directed staff to come up with a video and other materials so that we can do on multiple platforms to focus on pathways for people to get jobs for those, and for a lot that are underserved, traditionally underserved.
I know how we do it. Sorry. The ADD kicked in.
I hope it's not different than what we're already doing that you directed at your last meeting.
We have some type of school class in the library, and then they're not allowed to be within so many feet of the schools, are they? The ones with the ankle?
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct. But if we partnered with the schools, and as a city, if we partnered with the schools, and there's new technology that's out there that the county can't afford, but maybe the city could partner with the city, and, and we could give them better equipment at the schools, we could give them iPads, they can actually take an iPad right now and dissect a frog with it.
Come back, come back to what I was talking about, Marvin. You're just, you're diverting from what I said.
I'm running for election.
Oh. Forgot.
The idea of, that we will definitely explore the idea of the school, because if you could really get the school, a school, to do a class in there, that seems like it might be a way to do it, because the school would do that class at certain times. So at a minimum, you would likely be able to do the restriction a different way.
And then, if we got a sexual deviant that goes to the library, we can, never mind. I will bite my tongue. We can ask them to leave. Let's work on that. I think there's, I think that's a solution, actually.
Yeah. It's turning it into a school. It's, it's not, if I may, it's not dissimilar to where there've been neighborhoods that have used childcares or started childcares as a way to restrict people from being close in that neighborhood as well, too.
Well, that's easy then. Let's just have a Childcare Center at the library.
The school's probably an easier sell, but...
If you have, my wife used to have childcare. So if you have childcare and a person is a felon, it disqualifies you altogether, so.
It's really not the felon I'm concerned about.
Right.
It's the felon with the ankle bracelet.
Right.
That I'm concerned about. All right?
Good, good idea. We'll definitely explore that, separate from the study, that idea, because I think that may be, be able to implement it sooner. The last item I want to give an update on, the mayor brought this up last time about Channel 28. We are, we talked about that we're filming and, we're doing films right now. We will be giving to you at the end of April or the beginning of May, a full presentation. We're going to probably dub it Lancaster TV as opposed to Channel 28, and then we'll give you the schedule, the timetables, the whole bit. But we're working on that as well, too.
Are, are we having a news section?
We're going to have a, there, yes, there will be a news section. I don't know that that will be the first one rolled out. We're going to present it to you, and you could certainly change it.
But that is in the, in the mix eventually, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Good.
Then I'd like to, as the Vice Mayor talked about, the Board of Trade, I thought Lancaster really shone bright, not just from our presentation, but afterwards, we had an AVTA presentation where it was clear that Lancaster is the leader, is the push behind AVTA. And then Bill Allen from LAEDC came up and was very effusive in his praise for Lancaster and the work that's been done. He talked about BYD and the story of getting BYD here. So it was a good day for Lancaster, and this is a short snippet of that.
The best thing about doing business in Lancaster is we have a city council that is second to none, and a city team that works tirelessly every day to provide exceptional service to our residents and business owners. We are fortunate to have an abundance of creativity, foresight, and intellect.
You are right now in the most business-friendly city in Los Angeles County, Lancaster, California. We have the awards, but it's not about awards, and we have a lot of businesses that'll tell you the same thing, but it's not about that. It's what businesses do and what they can accomplish here. The proof is in the pudding.
When my family moved here in 1990, I asked my dad one question, like, why, why here? Why in Antelope Valley? And he says, "Son, you will get your answer when you grow up and when you have your own family to raise." And today, I love this community. The City of Lancaster will do anything to promote a business, to bring more businesses here.
Hunter Dodge started in 1944. 2008, they almost went under, not because they weren't good business people, but they were going under because Chrysler was going to shut off all their credit. Hunter Dodge came to the City of Lancaster, they decided that they needed a few hundred thousand dollars credit. The City of Lancaster decided to give it to them. And now they're building the largest Ram truck dealership in the United States. So let's give them a big hand.
The City of Lancaster prides itself on the network of local businesses that comprise this economic family in this community. Loyalty and trust is built on going that extra mile, on incorporating heart into what you do and how you do it. Having such heart posture rallies the support of those around you. This is what we're about in this community. This is what sets us apart. Lancaster is one of the most business-friendly cities in Southern California.
Lancaster is a city of firsts because it is a powerhouse community of intellect, of business-savvy individuals, of instinct-driven professionals. This has been demonstrated time and time again by successful businesses such as Harley-Davidson. I would like to give a shout-out to Ron and Yvette E. Mart for how valuable their organizations are here in the Antelope Valley. They figured out how to do business, not only the smart way, but the right way. And the doing business in Lancaster is an absolute no-brainer.
To the Lancaster City Council and Lancaster city staff, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do to make Lancaster the great city it is. And all the businesses that put their faith in our city, thank you as well. Together, we are a tremendous team, continuously building a sustainable economy for ourselves and our future generations.
And that's it.
Joe? Don't put me in the sun again. There was something I wanted to discuss. George Jung, is it? J-U-N-G? Jung?
Yes.
You know George.
Yeah.
Had a letter to the editor today, or yesterday, about the homeless encampments that are springing up along the freeways and do something about that. I mean, we're, we're doing, we're doing this great thing out at Mar-a-Loma with the Salvation Army. We're getting ready to, to, to expand the homeless facility out on, what is it, 30th Street and H. But I don't want them camping in the, what do you call those?
They're camping in the culverts, in the, behind the bushes, and at the off-ramps. What we've done is we've attacked 20th Street West off-ramp about a month ago, and very recently have a new case. You're going to see a, you already are seeing a focus on that. We will redouble those efforts.
All right. It's a carrot and stick problem, but let's not forget we have a stick. All right? Thank you. Well, that ought to get a letter to the editor going. Willie Green. Oh, wait a minute, you got to do your reading thing. Hold on, Willie, hold on.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Willie.
You weren't going to be able to do it without that, were you?
No, no, I need directions. Before you put them on, on the clock, I'd like to make a comment to Mayor Parrish, please.
Take Mr. Green off the clock.
On February 9th, I was involved in an auto accident. Red by your offices down by, on 10th Street and in the Winkler area. And two gentlemen from your offices came out to see if they could render assistance. Young man brought out water by chair. Excuse me. And my vehicle was rendered non-driveable. So I was asked if I had a ride home. And I said, "No." So this young man asked me for my keys, and I had just come from Costco. And he transferred my food to his vehicle. And he took me home. And before he left, he gave me a card. And it said, "Rutger Parrish." And I just want to let you know how much I appreciate the man that you raised, because so many wouldn't have gone that extra step to assist. So I just want to let you know that I appreciate you.
Mr. Green, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's a great gift.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, about three years ago, I was here and I listened to the mayor, and he made a statement that... to the mayor, and he made a statement that the city council would be transparent and proactive. And that got to me. So I said, "Well, if they can do that, then I can try to help in areas that the city need to be, I guess you could say, updated or whatever, improvements made." So I brought this to your attention three years ago. Down on Sierra Highway, there's a retirement village by Sands Bowling Center. And I made some calls, and I was directed to this department, to that department, to that department. I made four calls to one individual, didn't get a response. I left messages because they said, "Leave your name, sub your matter, your number." I called you back. Didn't get it. So I went on and I contacted whatever individual that I was directed to state my concerns to. Well, three years later, I'm still concerned. While I appreciate what you and your council have done for the city to increase the quality of life...
This has to do with the ability of the wheelchairs to traverse that area, right?
To get to Avenue K.
I remember the... I remember you being here.
Yes.
Why isn't... Would you find out why that hasn't been...
I will, and I apologize for that, and we will find out and get back to you this week.
I'd also like you to find out who's not returning their calls. I mean, if we can't return calls within 24 hours, we need to do something different.
I agree with you, and we will find that out.
They will talk to you about that, Mr. Green.
All right. Sometime before the holidays, I brought a letter, and I gave it to the receptionist downstairs, and she said she would pass it on. In January of 2016, I checked and I spoke with your assistant or secretary, and she couldn't find it. So if I may, I made a copy for you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. She'll get it for you.
Okay. But, thank you. The city has done a lot to promote bettering the quality of life for the citizens of Lancaster. I just feel like these people, and some of those people are veterans, and they live in that retirement home, and some of them, they have to use electric chairs. But the terrain is so rough, they take a chance and ride on the side of Sierra Highway.
Yeah, we can't have that. We're going to deal with that, Mr. Green.
Okay.
If it hasn't been dealt with in the next 60 days, I want you to come back, okay?
I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you for your time.
Okay, sure. David Paul.
Yes, sir.
I bet you wish Ryan did stuff like that, don't you?
He said there were two gentlemen. He was probably showing Ruck or how to do it.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening again. Forgive me for my passion before. That still haunts me. That harmed my children, and I just can't get my head around the fact that there's no due process in regard to those things, so please understand that. Thank you, though. I love this city. I love coming here. I love what you do. And we have problems. We're working on them. I love that. Vice Mayor, I just wanted to mention to you that we spent the last week watching this child and adult psychiatrist, Dr. Arman. He had a neuroscience show. It was 10 episodes long with various specialists talking about different things that harm the brain. And one of the things that harms the brain is mold. And if you did a survey of the Lancaster library, you would probably find that the mold spore count way exceeds what is safe. So that's something that...
Why would you think that?
Well, because every time I walk in there, I can smell the mold. So...
Really?
You know?
We'll check that out.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I appreciate everything you do, and I apologize again. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Fran, tell me something good.
There's a song there somewhere.
Is there a song? Tell me something good.
Hey, what happened to our playlist today?
Oh, she's got your theme song on it.
She was... Well, I came in late, didn't I?
No, I think we can... But thank you, Mark.
Good singing, "God Bless Lancaster." "God Bless Lancaster." That's a nice song. I don't know what you're talking about, but I just heard the words.
Are you auditioning, Fran?
Well, first of all, Mayor Parrish, Vice Mayor, Chris, council members, staff, again, thank you for listening to me. As you know, I also love Lancaster. My kids want me to move out, and I say, "No way, Jose."
I can't hear you, Fran.
And that's why I fight for it. I have... Okay, let's see. As you know, I'm a commissioner on the Homeless Impact Committee. Okay, we haven't had a meeting yet. It's supposed to start in January, and now we're three months into it, and all that has been done. Now, I'm also being...
Hold on, hold on. Is that true, Troy?
Yes, our first meeting is scheduled for April 15th. I'm looking over at our chairwoman, and we had some scheduling conflicts, and so we are having our first meeting here in April, and so we've been in contact.
Well, Fran, it could have been worse. They could have had a meeting and not told you.
No, no, I knew about April, yeah, but I'm talking about the three that we missed. But, okay, let me... I have been going to attending the Palmdale Neighborhood Safety and their homeless committees. I'm getting involved with them as far as to see... What I'm thinking, and I brought it up at their last meeting, which was last... When did I go there? Last week. They have me tonight, but I definitely can't be there and here at the same time. To be able to bring their homeless committee and our homeless committee, Lancaster and Palmdale, and maybe somehow we can join them together, together, and hopefully be able to do a joint venture and...
Fran, I would love to do that, but the vice mayor and the mayor of Palmdale are always fighting, you know? You just can't bring the two of those two together. Isn't that right?
Well, okay. All right.
Mike, I was looking at you. I was hoping for some affirmation here, you know? Not for you to look away.
Okay, Elizabeth. Oh, gee, my time's up already. Okay, well, I want to bring up the ABT... I was at the ABT meeting last week, and I had brought up to Vice Mayor Chris and the... Anyway...
Give her some more time. I got to update you, Fran. You get more time.
Thank you. I had brought up, because I... Things I didn't know, that on the MetroLink, on the car that has the disabled, they didn't have enough parking spots for our wheelchairs. And people in wheelchairs are parked in the aisle, and it was a catastrophe trying to get through for people. Now, let me finish. I want to... It's going to come out okay. So, and also about having plugs, I mean, electrical plugs for the chairs and for people's instruments. Well, last week, when I was riding the train again, the one train I was in did have, I think I counted, 10 or 12 spots for handicap to park, handicap chairs, or wheelchairs, or their walkers. So I talked to the conductor, because that's the first time I had seen that, and I asked him, "Is this the only train that has that one particular car?" He said, "No." We have... Because I told him the situation that I encountered of having all those wheelchairs in the pathway. And he says, "No, all our cars, all the way down, have for handicap seat parking." And I said, "There is?" Because every time I come on this train, there's people parked in blocking the walkway, the pathway. And the conductor told me, I got his name down somewhere, anyway, said that the conductor on the train at that time, when there was people blocking the drive... Blocking the walkway, he should have taken those people in their wheelchairs and transported them to another car in the same train. But they're not doing that. And it's very dangerous, because if there was an accident, people can get over our wheelchairs.
Fran, talk to Lee Derico about that, and he'll interface with him and take care of it, okay?
Okay, but I wanted to say that it's been...
We already took care of it.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
One more thing. I mean, I have a lot of things...
Okay, but you're pushing it.
Okay, real quick. I'm also involved with Little Rock, in the Little Rock Dam. Bringing back and opening up the dam is... Is there any way we can get some help from Lancaster towards that situation?
No.
No?
No.
No.
I mean, we have a jurisdiction, and we have a jurisdiction that we have to deal with here. You know, I mean, quite honestly, we really should have a city called the Antelope Valley, but we don't right now. The city of Lancaster, and that's what we're contending with. Little Rock Dam, I think, is in the county, right?
Oh, it's county? It's not part of the Antelope Valley?
Well, of course it is, but it's not part of the city of Lancaster.
Oh, I just... Because I know I went there years ago, and it's a nice place to go camping and have...
I know, I agree. I used to... Yeah. I used to go there all the time.
The Forest Service operates the recreational parks.
Well, tell them to do a better job.
I've been attending some of the meetings.
Okay, thanks.
Fran, you can get the support of the city of Lancaster as far as the support for it, but we can't do anything monetarily, but we can support.
Oh, no, okay. As long as we can get some support, that's great.
He's just telling you that because he's running for office.
Well, that's good. Keep going.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you very much. God bless you all.
All right. Roger.
I just feel bad enough. I don't even...
Roger, this is an interesting speaker card.
That's my membership?
Well, I like your speaker card. I mean, it's a photocopy rather than...
Wait up through talk before you start complimenting me. I was going to fine you $50 for eating during council meetings. I was going to fine you $20 for being a little late, but you said a good speech, so I want to omit yours, and I'm still working on your fine.
Roger?
What do you... Is that so far?
I didn't have lunch. I didn't have dinner.
What about the last meeting?
Same thing.
Somebody feed this man, you know? Give him something to eat.
Wait a minute. You eat this for dinner and see how...
One and a half minutes paperwork, maybe a minute ad lib. Mark has saved us another half an hour of my questions. I tighten up every time I think the government is grabbing my wallet. I had eight three-minute statements ready to fire off tonight until Mark showed me the light, but I did take my three minutes on Marv's poppies, and he'll probably win that for Mother Nature. This statement I can do in less than two minutes. Seriously, the opinions Mark gave me made sense. This man is no dummy. He knows his stuff. Although, don't let us think we can't make a mistake, especially in investing money. The main thing, we are all here to help our city. Our intentions are what is best for the city. At least us one percenters... Hey, who's talking? Oh. At least our one percenters get up off their butts and come to the meetings and vote. Keep up the good job, but remember, Big Brother will be watching, and your investments better be well-thought-out, or some of you will be here in the audience like me, especially those up there for reelection. Marv and Raj, you know who you are. So far, you gentlemen have my endorsement. I don't think your competitors can even afford signage. Yeah. Speaking of signage, Raj, on J and 20th West, when I go to the movies, because I don't have anything to do, I can see Marv's sign coming to the movies and going home from the movies. Your guys didn't put it on the backside of the sign, so...
That's why.
Who did?
Marv.
Marv did it? Don't let him do that to you, Raj, you know? Okay, let's go home, have some nice dinner, take a shower, eat, and have a beer, Marv, you know? He knows those... He might drink beer, yeah. Anyway, I'm going to try not to get in board, because my people out here that are faithful, I'm learning some lessons from them. I'll try to always bring stuff that's either got a little humor in it, or it's valuable for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
I'm out of here, too, so I...
I saved you for last for a reason. And Mike, I'm not going to forget this lack of support. Okay, I guess we have to talk about all the people suing us. We don't? But there's a whole page load of cases. You're afraid to tell me, aren't you?
I'm not afraid to tell you, but we do not have a reason to go in closed session tonight.
That's awful. Lot of litigation.
It is.
All right. Those damn lawyers.
I know. Terrible.
Talk about why Mr. Voss wasn't here.
Yes. Don't I have... We're not going to close the meeting in honor of his mother. We'll do that next time.
He was very recent, so I just... To announce right now, we can do that next meeting.
Our prayers are with Mr. Voss, whose mother passed away, so that's why he's not here. Okay, we're going to... The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 27, 2018, at 5:00 PM. And my wife has abandoned me, so I'm not telling her I'm coming home. Well, I mean, just for the day. She'll be back tomorrow.
She had her hopes up.